Good evening and welcome to the January 16th meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of this meeting. We'll begin with an invocation by Mayor Beamish, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Dear God, thank you on behalf of all who have gathered here on this cold night. Thank you for your many blessings and abundant blessings for our city. Thank you for your life itself and the measure of health that we all need to fulfill our calling. Thank you for the ability to be involved in the useful work of our city and for the honor of bearing the appropriate responsibilities. And tonight, we ask you to bless our city officials and grant them wisdom to govern amid conflicting interests and issues that may affect our city. A sense of safety, wellness, and true needs for our people. A keen thirst for what is just and right. Confidence in what is good and fitting. And the ability to work together in harmony even when there may be honest disagreement. And we ask your personal peace in all the lives of the people gathered here and the joy in their task of serving. We ask all these in your blessed name as we strive for peace in our city, in our country, and in our world. Amen.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Twiss?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Present.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Lutz?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
I'll move to excuse Mr. Kendall.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mrs. Oda to excuse Mr. Kendall. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall is excused.
Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the January 2nd meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, January 2, 2018. Ordinance Number 01, 2018. Employing Clerk of Council was given first reading, adopted, and oath administered to the clerk. Mr. Kendall was elected President pro temp of Council. Mr. Phillips was elected Clerk of Council pro temp. Committee reports. Community and Economic Development Committee recommended legislation be prepared, accepting final plat of Section 4 of Fox Harbor subdivision. Committee recommended legislation be prepared, accepting final record plan of the Kettering Health Network Commercial Plan Development. Utilities Committee recommended that legislation be prepared, authorizing an extension of the agreement associated with electric generation for city facilities, which will provide a savings. Resolution Number R1, 2018, authorizing the use of Internet auction for the sale of surplus property during 2018, first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R2, 2018, into an agreement related to generation supply for electric generation for city facilities was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number 02, 2018, final plat, Fox Harbor subdivision 4, first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number 03, 2018, accept the annexation of 33.3712 acres. The Wilson Annexation was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance Number 04, 2018, accepting final record plan of Kettering Health Network Commercial Plan Development, first reading and adopted. Following various comments, Council adjourned at 7:24 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twiss to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We have just one committee report tonight on the workshop of the Committee of the Whole Council. All members of Council and the President participated in the January 8th, 2018 workshop. Also attending was the Mayor, the Director of Law, the Director of Public Service and Safety, the Clerk of Council, and members of city staff. Items covered included the Sunshine Law, ethics invocations, the chain of command, rules of council, types of committees, business cards, council priorities, and community branding. From the January 8th Council Workshop, Council will have the approval of the Rules of Council on the agenda for the January 16th meeting, including a clarification to Page 5, Rule 7, Legislation A1, respectfully submitted by all members of Council. And we will need a motion then to approve the Rules of Council.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Twilliger and seconded by Mr. Swazer to approve the Rules of Council. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Motion is adopted.
There are no regular resolutions this evening. We do have a resolution in memoriam for Mr. William H. Hobart Jr. Mrs. Knight, can you please read that?
Resolution in memoriam, William Harrison Hobart Jr., 1924, 2018. Whereas the members of Council for the City of Troy recognize on behalf of all Troy citizens a service to our city by the late William H. Hobart Jr. And whereas William H. Hobart Jr. served his country with honor and distinction in the Army Medical Corps during World War -- during the Second World War. And whereas William H. Hobart Jr. was a lifelong Trojan dedicated to the Troy community by being involved in a number of community, area, and philanthropic organizations, including serving on the Board of Directors of the Wyman Conservancy District for 32 years and being an early supporter of preserving natural areas and resources and encouraging recycling. And whereas William H. Hobart Jr. particularly served the City of Troy during his 60-year career in corporate leadership of the Hobart Brothers Company, growing the company that is an integral part of Troy's industrial heritage, increasing the employment base and fostering economic development and prosperity for the community and the company employees. And whereas William H. Hobart Jr. was inducted into the Troy Hall of Fame in October 1996 in recognition of its leadership of the Hobart Brothers Company and concern for the Troy community. And whereas William H. Hobart Jr. was removed from our midst by death on January 1, 2018. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council, the City of Troy, Ohio, that this expression of appreciation for the dedicated service and commitment of William Harrison Hobart Jr. to his beloved city of Troy and the citizens of this community be extended with sincere sympathy to Mrs. Julia Hobart and the members of the family of William H. Hobart Jr. Be it further resolved that a notation of this resolution be placed in the official records of the City of Troy, Ohio, and the Clerk of Council is hereby directed and instructed to forward a duly attested and signed copy of the resolution to the family of William Harrison Hobart Jr.
May we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twiss to approve the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
The resolution is approved, and I will pass it around for signature.
Thank you. We have no regular resolutions. We have no ordinances this evening. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
Only to remind Council that it is time for the annual filing of the financial disclosure statements, which you can find the information online with the Ohio Ethics Commission.
Thank you. Mayor?
I have no comments tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Titterington?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Director of Law?
I don't have anything this evening about a President. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to just encourage Council members to attend two upcoming sessions. The first is January 18th at 6:30 PM, which is a public information session to be held here in City Hall by the city staff, and that would regard MacGyve Road Phase 4 and the MacGyve Dorset intersection. And the second date is January 29th at 6:00 PM, and that is a Council Workshop to be held in the Bravo Room at Hobart Arena, and that's regarding the West Main Street Corridor upcoming project. Are there any comments from Council members tonight?
Madam President.
Mr. Twilliger?
Just to remind the citizens of Troy, dealing with a parking issue, the new parking lot east of the Police Department, the first two rows of that are available for public We've had some questions with some businesses in dealing with that, but it is public parking. Signs will be placed up. Right now, there are some issues, weather-related, but that is parking space available to the public.
Marty?
Do, I have something.
Mrs. Oda?
Patrick, I'd just like to ask, and I don't know how it's done, I'm concerned with the plowing out front along the sidewalks and in the parking, the parallel parking. Just getting here tonight, everywhere in the city, it's like the snow has just pushed up against the curb, and people, anybody getting up on the sidewalk has to step in snow. Isn't there any way that the snow can be cleared away from the curb so that people don't have to deal with that?
So when we have a significant amount of snow, normally more than we've had, to be honest, particularly in the downtown, as time allows, we will take the trucks out and we will scoop the snow out of the downtown and typically pile it at the North Market ballfields. We are finishing up with plowing the local roads, and then after that, we can, I can talk to the street foreman about doing that.
Well.
The difficulty is, I'm not sure where you'd put it, other than to pile it up on the sidewalks, or, I mean, there's no tree lawns or anything to put it, you know, put it up against, and we do try to clear a path, but it is difficult sometimes around here.
Park a dump truck and haul it out of here.
It's not quite that easy. It's very time-consuming, and again, again, our first priority is to get the roads clear.
And if the roads aren't clear, and that freezes solid, and, I mean, in years past, this has been an issue.
It's always an issue. It's always been an issue. It's one of those things that they will pile it up and then they will haul it away. And as time allows, they can't be the first priority. We've still got to get, you know, all the streets and the accessways and make sure that they're plowed.
I know.
I'm not sure why you're frustrated. I understand what you're saying, but...
I am frustrated with it because I had to step through it tonight coming in, and I know that it freezes solid, and it's an issue every year, and it just seems like we need to do a better job of clearing it for pedestrians. I mean, at this point, cars can't even pull all the way up to the curb, so cars are back farther out into the roadway because of the snow. That's all. Thank you.
I understand.
Anyone else in Council have any comments?
Yes, Madam President, I just have one.
Mr. Swazer?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Joanne Anderson from Lincoln Center and Shane Carter from the Lincoln Center for helping with the Martin Luther King Celebration yesterday. They did a phenomenal job. I think it was very moving and uplifting on several points, and I just wanted to thank them.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from Council members? Any comments from city staff this evening? Any comments from anyone in the audience?
My name is Dave Newham, 2385 Cara Drive, and for the record, that's on a cul-de-sac, and that's the reason I'm here. I'm upset with the rules that we have for snow removal. I've lived at Cara Drive for 19 years. When I first moved in, they plowed Cara Drive as they plowed all streets in Troy. Now they don't. Well, we plowed the main thoroughfares, and I downloaded what was on the website, and we have primary and secondary, and I understand that, that they should go first. But as a taxpayer, all streets should be plowed. When they call the fire department, they don't come and say, "Oh, I'm sorry, you live on a cul-de-sac, we can't come." If we do that with plows, it's not right. My taxes are as good as anybody else's. Can I ask why cul-de-sacs are not plowed? Does anybody have an answer?
Do you want to address that? Mr. Titterington?
Well, I think the, you have the answer in front of you. I believe you downloaded the...
I did.
...the weather policy. Yes, the cul-de-sacs are the last. Mayor and I, as well as possibly some members of Council, also live on cul-de-sacs.
Yes.
We don't get plowed any more often than you do.
That's not true.
That is very true.
Your street was plowed tonight, and the mayor's cul-de-sac was plowed tonight, mine was not.
And if yours has not been yet, then it will be tomorrow because all roads will be cleared.
It'll be the first time in years that my cul-de-sac has been plowed, if that happens.
I can, Madam Chair, I will gladly give you a report of the GPS that is on all of the vehicles to let you know that, that in fact is not true, that we have plowed in past years. It is not very frequent because they are the local streets, they are the cul-de-sacs, they are the smaller streets. Our priority, as you all know, is our main streets are the ones that are the most heavily traveled. They have the highest traffic counts, they have the highest speeds, they have the highest volumes. The secondaries, which come off of the mains, of course, are the second, second most important priority. Whether it's on a main, secondary, or a local street, our facilities, first and foremost, our fire stations, as well as the police station, are plowed at the same time, or at least salted, depending on the event. I think you're all very familiar with the weather policy that's been in place for a number of years. And then we also plow or salt around the schools. As a matter of fact, this weekend, even though we, the snow was gradual, we did have what amounted to several events. Our crews were out, first of all, they salted all day on Friday in preparation for the major storm that really never came. They were out four times over the weekend, either salting or plowing, again, the major roads. Whether you're on a local street, a cul-de-sac, a secondary, or a main, everybody in Troy is gaining significant benefit from plowing the mains and the secondaries because everybody has to use them to get around. The locals in the cul-de-sacs benefit, you know, on my street, five residences, five properties. Cul-de-sacs are typically smaller, so they're very localized, and there's a lot less traffic to, frankly, to activate the salt and do anything like the secondaries and mains with all the traffic and the wheels that hit it. So it is much far, far less frequent that we do plow the locals. It may happen once or twice a season. In this past, this past weekend, I can tell you that I did go out at 5:30 in the morning with our street foreman over the weekend to personally look at what they were doing and what the roads looked like and what the conditions were, and, you know, they were very passable. They did an excellent job. There were some that were concerned that our roads were not as good as perhaps in the county and other communities, and we did check that. Our roads were just as good and in some cases, better. We kept up with it, and as a matter of fact, there was one time when the foreman came back out because the road started, the salt activated some of the snow in the ground and created a slush, and we had some skidding concerns, and so he came out and he plowed back a couple of streets and bridges. So we were at it all weekend. The reason that we have this policy is it is very, very labor-intensive, much more labor-intensive to do all of the streets and the local streets included than it is to do the secondaries and the mains. It's much easier to do the secondaries and mains because we have our big plows, we can go in tandem, the roads are wider, the speeds are a little faster, even though we don't try, we try not to go too quickly when we're plowing snow. It is extremely labor-intensive when you get into locals and especially cul-de-sacs. There's a big difference between 15, 20 years ago and now with the number of residential developments, cul-de-sacs and local roads. Overall, we have approximately 300 lane miles of roads. Two-thirds of them are secondaries and mains. And so as a routine matter, we are always doing at least two-thirds of our roads, and unless the locals and the cul-de-sacs are impassable, and there's an event that exceeds three inches or more, or there's a significant ice event, you know, every, if you look at this, the policy that you saw online, Dave, you saw that we treat every event potentially differently. This is just a general guideline. We work very closely with the police, and our street foreman personally goes out and inspects before we make any kind of decision, and then we discuss it. And this weekend was no different.
That's not my complaint. I understand priorities. I understand you have main roads. As a taxpayer, I don't understand why at some point my cul-de-sac doesn't get plowed. That's my complaint.
Okay, and I can, I can tell you that in talking to Jerry today, he knew that he was not going to get 100% of the roads today, but that he felt like they were going to get 90-plus percent of them today, and he said that tomorrow morning, they would be out to finish, and perhaps you were in that section. He didn't tell me which section they didn't get to. I didn't talk to him at the end of the day, but it will be plowed tomorrow. And if it's not, you can call me and we'll make sure it gets done.
I will. But I just, I think we need to take a look at this as a group, as a city, and be a little bit more customer-service friendly with our taxpayers. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
And just to follow up, just real quickly on that, you know, I started to say how labor-intensive the locals are, even though it's a third of our streets, it takes us about four times as long when we do all of the locals and the cul-de-sacs along with the secondaries and mains. We can plow the secondaries and mains with eight trucks in six hours. By comparison, to completely plow everything during an event takes 20, all 21 of our operations staff, and that's from several different departments, including utilities and parks, et cetera, 21 employees, approximately 11 to 12 hours. That's how labor-intensive the local streets are.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Mr. Lutz?
Mr. Titterington, you said that schools are on the priority list?
Correct.
I drove up Plum today by Kyle School, and it doesn't look like it's been touched.
Well, and that is quite possible. One of the things that I'm going to follow up, the mayor and I are going to follow up with the Police Department, is we seem to be having an issue with property owners, with snow blowers or private contractors that are plowing or blowing the snow back in the middle of the street. Plum Street, I can verify that Plum Street was, was plowed and salted several times. I can tell you which trucks and when they came by, and I will do that. But in some cases, you know, you can go on one particular road, and it will be down to Blacktop and Wet, you know, three-quarters of the way, and then there's one section that is blown over with snow, and that's because it's getting blown back into the street. I can't tell you that that's what happened here, but I'd be willing to bet that might be the issue.
Okay, thank you.
Marty, I have a question.
Mrs. Oda?
Is there any reason, I mean, it has come up in years past that the suggestion was made to have alternate parking on alternate days so that roads can be, you know, completely cleared without any cars on them? Has that ever been considered again?
We've discussed it, and I can reach out to the chief and ask him about that again. The difficulty is, like trying to declare a snow emergency, is enforcement as we're out, and the police are out, and they're trying to manage traffic, especially during an event, trying to enforce parking restrictions of any kind are difficult, particularly in an emergency. That would be a major, major change, and there would have to be a lot of communication, a lot of trial and error, a lot of warnings. It would probably not be successful within one snow season.
But if people know that that's what's going to happen, that that's what's expected, it would certainly help, I would think.
It would, but it would be a totally different mindset, culture, cultural change. People would have to know which days are which. We would probably have to blanket the community with signage to let them know, you know, which side of the road they're supposed to park.
Just wondered if it had ever been considered again.
It had been discussed before, yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question? So what's the determining factor to when you go to the overtime situation, or the 11 people versus the 21 people?
It, that's, that's hard to give you a hypothetical, but it would be, for example, if we had a significant icing event, if we had a lot of rain and then suddenly the temperature dropped like it would today, then everything would be a sheet of ice. We would be out there in full force because you have an immediate safety and sliding, you know, accident potential, a lot of accidents. A, you know, we were, we were forecast on Tuesday or Wednesday to get up between eight to 12 inches of snow, so we had contingency plans and we had everybody on notice that they would probably be going out if that, in fact, happened. And overnight on Friday night, we did not, you know, receive anywhere near that. And so as the police were out patrolling, they noticed some, some sliding. They called Jerry. Jerry, you know, Jerry goes out and says, "Yeah, we better hit the, the secondaries and mains," which is where your accidents occur. Every event is different, and everyone is evaluated, and it's the people, it's the staff and the crews that are on the, on the street that are, that are monitoring it the best.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I guess for two or three events, I don't understand why we can't expand it to get all the streets. I don't know. We can talk about it in private, Patrick, but that would just be my thoughts, that it's not a daily event, it's not even a routine event. I mean, we probably had four inches of snow on Monday, three.
Monday, officially, we had 2.4 inches, and that was only in parts of the community.
Didn't we plow Monday?
We plowed the mains and the secondaries.
The mains and secondaries.
Right.
And plows go different than salt. But do you salt and plow at the same time?
We can if there are spots that need to be salted at the same time. They're the same, they're the same plows, you know, they're the same trucks, I should say.
So we don't salt and then come back through and plow?
Oh, no. We would just be scraping the salt off.
One fell swoop. And we can get all that done in six hours.
For the mains and secondaries.
And it would take an extra six hours to get the tertiary roads.
And two and a half times as many employees.
Man-powers.
And equipment.
Correct. But we have the equipment.
We do.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the audience this evening?
Lester Connor, 1210 South Clay Street, Troy, Troy, Ohio. It's been said many times up here that our quality of service is better, but I do know for sure that it's costing the citizens more now than it has ever cost them in their life living here in Troy. With that said, in Westbrook, two weeks ago, the City of Troy, Troy's people, forgot to pick up a lot of the places out in Westbrook. Now, last week... Now, last week, runkey forgot to pick up out in Westbrook, and everything's frozen out in the streets now, and everybody has to carry all their recycle out to the street, walk through the snow, slush around, and put it in their containers. I don't think that's better quality and service for what we're paying, and all these people who are paying the taxes aren't really getting the streets done like they used to. I can remember when the city of Troy, I mean, they did the side streets and everything. I mean, it was, it was a beautiful place. But now, I think part of the problem is, we don't have as many workers on the street departments anymore. Just like he said, we're using people out of parks and this and that for twenty-one people. We've, either a lot of people got laid off or retired, and they're not getting replaced. And I've been told this by several people that work for the city on the streets, that that's part of the problem. We don't have enough personnel working for the streets anymore. That's what part of the problem is. Okay, now, I'll go on now to the next issue of my mind, and here it is, the day after Martin Luther King, and I can look at this council, and I don't see one person of color up here. I don't see any Democrats up here. I would myself personally like to see a more cross-section of Troy being represented up here on this council by either having included people of color, Orientals, and, you know, Democrats. I mean, this is a pretty strong Republican council, and it shows that way in a lot of the things that are done up here. I mean, of cutting back on this and cutting back on that to save money here, to save money there, but it never trills down to the, to the citizens. We don't see that savings anywhere. It's always more and more and more, every year, more and more and more. Now we just did the water, now we're going to the sewage and everything, and every five years, and then some of it's even on ten-year basis. I don't understand, we've got so much money in the, in the, in the general fund that it's ridiculous, and you still say that you can't do anything for the people. I just don't understand it. How much money do you need to waste, just like a new thing for, instead of Troy, Ohio, USA, now we're going to have a new logo or a new banner, sixty-three thousand dollars. I, you know, come on, folks. You're not good stewards of our money, you're just spenders of our money. Thank you.
Is there any other comments from the audience? Anyone else have any questions or comments? Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Have a safe and peaceful week. Meeting adjourned.